You say. Your square is out now.
No, 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 that was right. I mean, open zoom. Did I men up? Did I? Yeah, it's right there. But did I close it up forever? No, still streaming?
Yeah. We closed the YouTube app, the open. I remember that part.
Well, um, let's see, um, it's it's four twenty nine off of close enough. Thank you. Um, we'll call the July twenty eighth regular planning commission. Grand County Planning Commission meeting to order. Um, first up, we have citizens to be heard at four thirty. I do not see any in the room. I don't believe there are any online. We see people online, a little black window up there. Being as there are none, if this does last until six o'clock, we'll offer another opportunity for citizens to be heard at six. But we'll move on to ex parte communications and disclosures. Um, I have none. Does anybody have?
Yeah, Chrissy.
You have Chris up. And then approval of the meeting minutes. We don't have meeting minutes in our packet. So we will defer those to our special meeting minute approval, regular meeting. Later on. Presentations, um, jumping into the planning staff report. Chrissy, do you have anything that's not MFR forty five four?
Yes, um. I am going out of town for the next commission meeting. I will not be here, neither will I. So it's it's kind of up to you guys how we want to handle this. I do have things that need to be on an agenda. Um, I can defer those to the next one. I won't be zooming into like facilitated meeting or set this up. I don't think, like, it can be done, but I just kind of wanted to see, engage how you guys want to handle it. There's a couple of options.
My first and really main concern is that there are there any public hearings on the next week?
Well, I would, I would schedule them. I have some that I need to do, but I'm not going. I've spoken to applicants and any applicant that I'm working with wouldn't want to schedule a public hearing without me here.
Great.
So that's sort of their fine with deferring for a couple of weeks.
Applicants prerogative works.
Um, but for your, for as far as the meeting goes, what we could do, we could either, we could cancel it, we could move it to, so we'd have two weeks in a row. If you guys wanted to do it that way, we could do two Mondays in a row. I I know there are a lot of things that we're sort of working on. Um, we can have like a really long meeting, um, for the second August meeting, if you, if that would, if people would be open to that, or we could do. We could just cancel it and I could just push things.
Mainly because a lot of this probably, um, rescheduling meetings probably depends on a lot of people's schedules and we've got to have that in front. Um, would, would, do you guys think it'd be okay, um, to? Uh, I don't know, would it be okay to like, give us a couple scenarios about when rescheduling would look like?
Yeah.
Like, check on childcare.
And we can figure this out, uh, via email.
That's what I think, yeah.
So.
We could strapple that in a digital online sort of like.
Yeah, so the next meeting is supposed to be August eleven. We could do.
I would not be here for this one.
I don't think I'll be here for that one either.
Yeah.
I think we either.
Well, the twenty, yeah, the twenty fifth was just, you know, that would just be, uh, the regular, regular meeting. So. With public hearings, moving it forward wouldn't be beneficial because I'm within my ten days, so I couldn't post anything. So, um, we could have it and, um, there just won't be any sort of actionable or like public hearings you guys could.
We could do the approval of meeting minutes and that's it. Just get that out of the way.
That could happen, and I could see if Dana could sort of set this up and.
Or if you wanted to give me a crush course in the meantime, like a public hearing.
It seems easy.
Ask, ask the guys I work with, how many times a day I yell at the robot pays.
Um, but yeah, so I'll send out an email and maybe we can just all reply to that on how we want to handle it. I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that I wouldn't be here for that next meeting. And that, um, applicants are asking to push things. We could do, potentially, we could have the public hearing for landscape ordinance, which the commissioner is very antsy to get through.
I I would, uh, because public hearings have specific requirements that none of us can remember entirely except this. Suggest that we defer our actual public hearing until we have administrator here.
What about, uh, a meeting? I guess on the eighteenth and then one on the Tuesday. People be able to make the twenty sixth.
One of those, we'll look at, um, our work schedules and childcare schedules and figure it out in the email. Get out of those details.
Cause I was thinking that we could put it on the eighteenth, August eighteenth, but that is actually the day that I'd get back, so. Be a little rough for that one, but it could. We could maybe make that.
Fit the specific schedule.
Yeah, I'll get that.
Our specific schedules.
Yeah, and so I'll send that out. Maybe I'll send it with a doodle poll, so you guys can sort of vote on when we can reschedule it. Or if you just want to have it. These are fun things for everyone involved. Um, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Chrissy. We'll figure that out. It doesn't sound like anything. Trish, County Commission up there?
Mine is very quick, um. There wasn't much from the July fifteenth meeting. Um, we did hire a new individual, Melissa, Melissa Jeffers. Um, within economic development, but she's also doing PR, which is kind of interesting. So they, you know, be a piece of planning. Um, we had the public comment for the Metter Drive and there was no public comment. And then I do want to apologize, um. I made a comment about the landscape ordinance and how it was being driven and and I want to apologize for the manner that I said it. You know, we have a couple commissioners very passionate about that, that have constituents that are pushing on them, so that's the manner that I should have said it. Anyway, so I apologize if I was flippant about the who was driving that idea though.
We are all individuals and we all bring our individual perspectives to civic duty.
Yeah.
So that's. Um, super, thanks, Trish.
Good luck.
Um, we have no public hearing scheduled today. And so we'll dive straight into our general business and discussion of the MFR forty five code edits. Um, if you guys may have seen these online and they have them in our agenda packet. As I understand it, nothing from two point six is getting removed. We're just adding another section that echoes. Greater specificity.
Well, so the one that was presented to me originally would have been a repeal and replace. So all we would have was MFR forty five. I didn't like that. I didn't like a lot about that one. I don't like that one at all. Um, I have been very vocal about, I think that that is short sighted and it, it creates a situation where people who already have these zoning designations um, are now locked into one path. Yes, which I think is hugely problematic. It's, um, very limiting. It it doesn't come with a map according to the way it was written when it was presented to me. It would just be anywhere that has an acre, you could put forty five units on with no setbacks. No, um, I mean, I'm not a fan. So this was sort of an answer to it. Um, there is another section that I will have to adjust. It would be to be, um, to Article three, so that it would have development standards associated with it. I don't like to push a land use code revision through without development standards associated with it. I think those are important. Um, and so before I would even put this in front of you, I would make sure that we have development standards for this specific, um, section of code. So what this basically is, is, um, for, it would be forty five density, which I still think is a little high for most of Grand County. Um, there's no surrounding county that I can find that has forty five and one acres, except Provo would be the closest. And I don't think that a town of five thousand meets forty five units in one acre. That's three, that's three stories. Um, with the, you know, and the parking and stuff. I just think it's a little crazy. But we can sort of talk about that. Uh, it's one of the things I wanted to discuss with you guys. I wanted to make sure that if we were going to approve it, we had standards that we, we had to, that they had to exist um, within particularly roads that these would have, that these lots would have to be on. Cause we don't want, the way it was written previously was any one acre law. So it could be on a private road with forty five units, no parking requirements, no setbacks. This all just seemed like a headache, especially to try to administer in the planning office. So creating a situation where these have to be on, um, arterial or collector roads. Creating a situation where they have to exist within the character of the neighborhood. Where the future land use map is looked at. I mean, they are legislative decisions, but I do think it's better to put that language in code so that if it ever does go to litigation, we can say, yeah, we looked at this. We, we considered this and it gives, um, the bodies who are deciding something to look at outside of just their own whimsy of the day. So those are the purposes of me making it a little more involved than it was previously presented to, um, the county commission, and I think you received a copy of the new changes from, um, commissioners, so.
Um, gonna jump right in, as I usually try to do with like, what do we think about at this stage of a new land use ordinance? Like, how do we, how do we tackle this idea? I think it's important to recognize that this is a pretty big change. Um, pretty darn big change. And especially when we're talking about the development of this size and scope. There are other bodies of jurisdiction outside of the planning commission and the county commission, who may be substantially impacted by approval of a development of this type. Chrissy did a great job, but, um, my initial thought is, uh, the, the utility stakeholder cohort, not only groundwater and sewer, but also, um, Pacificor and Rocky Mountain Power. Um, it is not easy to deliver a hundred and thirty eight kilovolt lines just wherever the heck you want. Because you've got a bunch of large apartment complexes down that private road. And so, um, or, or, or impact fees to listen um, and installing the necessary diameter, you know, like how diameter of the pipes are big ones, right? Like, um, I would certainly hope that before any language like this came to a public hearing. I know you're gonna hate me the W word, but we, I would want to workshop this kind of thing with Pacificor and Questar, they're not Questar anymore. Thank you, whatever they call themselves now. And, um, and with the, to make sure that our future land use map also aligns with the scheme of their planned infrastructure build out is my first thought. And so that's kind of an example of how I think we, we want to look at something this big. This could be a good idea, but man, there are roadblocks and unknown unknowns that are not in our control. And it requires discussion with more people other than us here in the county ecosystem. Is my point and like, let's talk about other folks. There, if you have ideas for other, like, um, G cap, county roads. The Fire Special Service District isn't a part of the county. And so these are all stakeholders that will be satisfied. We'll go through that and that's kind of where I am right now.
I agree with that and I appreciate you saying that. I think that, um, some of these really big changes that have been are going to try to be pushed through. I just think of slowing down, I'm doing things a little more thoughtfully, so we don't, um, end up in precarious situations, particularly neighborhoods.
I have comments and questions, right? One of the things I'd like to see is what was done with the HDHO, which is some limit on the number of these things that could happen. Uh, you know, how many forty five person units do we need for the number of affordable housing people who would want to use these units? I mean, I don't know, two, three? And you know, uh, so I would, I would like to see that. I think the workshop idea is, uh, uh, terrific. I'm kind of curious, I think I know, right now, the greatest density we allow? Is it eight per acre with multi-family residential? Or how do people build apartments at this point?
Yeah, well, so there is a, a previously, uh, approved MFR twenty, um, in highway commercial, it's eighteen.
Okay.
And, um,
That's good.
Yeah, so highway commercial is where.
Well, this is more than double, I, you know, one thing I'd love to see is what, what does it look like on an acre? I just know, there probably are no examples here in the county.
There's none in, in the surrounding counties. I couldn't find one in Carbon. I couldn't find one in Emery. I couldn't find one in Wayne. I went, you know, circled up and Provo was the closest place I found with this sort of density.
And I'm not necessarily against density, it's just where would you put this that it wouldn't have, you know, and these applicability? You know, where would it have a limited impact on existing neighborhood in terms of just its size and volume? So I, I mean, it's, I think workshopping is important.
And I do think that there are areas in the county where it would be appropriate, and we do have an MFR map where they have, you know, outlined where higher, greater density within MFR is appropriate. Um, I think maintaining that map might be something that I would, you know, definitely think we should discuss.
I, I could imagine such a thing at the university.
I remember we kind of talked about this with Elisa and wasn't there a thing of like, it was basically the, the lot standard designs uh, conflicted with their like fire capability, right? That's, that's what I remember was like, we kind of look.
There's, I, I'm not an expert. I don't speak for the fire district, but generally there are certain levels of setbacks um, for large buildings between lot lines. Because you need room to get firefighters and apparatus onto any side of the building. Otherwise, you get sort of like a, you know, Chicago eighteen forty five thing going on.
So I, I wonder if you were to pass this, would it be like now if forces our fire department to upgrade and all that or?
Well, previously, this, the MFR that previously came, I think before you guys, couldn't pass through legal review.
Okay.
Couldn't pass what?
It couldn't pass legal reviews. It never went through the, well, it went through legal review, um, and I couldn't make it work.
What was the holdup?
Um, there was, it was kind of the vagueness mostly was, um, cause it, it referenced sixty percent AMI, but according to what? Um, it referenced, uh, some, some of the ways that we could enforce it. Uh, it was pretty limiting. It assumed that it was going to be, um, under like federal, uh, a federal program or state program to get it on the ground. But you can't make those assumptions when you write land use code. So everything that was written was written under the assumption that they were going to be doing it through that grant program. But you can't assume that. You have to write it as if they're going to be funding it and are out of their own pockets.
Certainly can't depend on federal grants.
Yeah, so, so that was, those were a lot of the problems. And we've said, I mean, it went back and forth. And then the, the builder who was interested pulled, and so the whole thing just kind of fell apart.
So, Obe, I was thinking about student too, but I don't know, they, you.
They qualify.
Very low or low income. Like, that would be student housing.
Yeah, and I was, when I said that, I really probably should have said, the nice thing about universities, they put something like that on an acre. And then they have parkland around it and buildings to go to. So that it, it's the reason I mentioned it, but yes, I did. I think afterwards, whoops. It's not, although many of them might qualify. Well, they don't qualify as working.
I mean, a lot of, a lot of folks, I mean, I there is a need for higher density.
Yep.
Um, and I think a lot of folks, um, I'm thinking about, we don't have a to my knowledge, a very robust student population in the community yet, but the university is getting built out. Development is increasing.
Yep.
Um, and, um, not just students, but recent graduates of college and entry level positions are still going to be in that low income uh, bracket, you know, depending on how much a river guide works. They might make a hundred and twenty dollars a day. Four days a week, maybe, um, pre-tax. And so there will be plenty of folks, I mean, the two big, as far as I'm aware, the, the, the two big program, I'll see right now, are nursing and natural resources. And, you know, career, um, prospects in those jobs. Yeah, sure. There's a welding program that's pretty good, um. And so that's, um, something we're thinking about, like the need for, um, lower income high density housing is gonna increase. Um, but we can't, I think, um, speculate as to like a zoning, a new zoning classification without very explicitly identifying with our non-governmental or quasi-governmental stakeholders, exactly which lots will be included in those things, like the debt, like, you know. They need to have enough room so their fire apparatus can do their job. Um, the, the sheriff's emergency manager, there are other natural disasters other than fires that the it's not the fire district, you know, Jameson's people are gonna have to take a look at this, think about evacuation routes. There's a lot to, you don't just snap your fingers and make a city.
Is there a reason we want to do this now and not in conjunction with the land use code updates that we all know we need to do?
I love that question, and I would love an answer to that question, but I don't have one.
Cause it really seems to go hand in hand with that. Doesn't it keep talking about future land use map and where would this go?
I mean, and I think that that's something that I have continually pushed for is that we look at everything together instead of, um, doing this this way. Um, but yeah, I mean, I've sort of.
I, I wonder if we can take from a discussion or something, all the bullet points. Like, do we agree that this doesn't match the character of Grand County or does it? Like, you say, no, maybe not. We can have a discussion item ready with bullet points to give to the people that are gonna write, let real writer land use code and be like, hey, we kind of came to a consensus that we want thirty five, not forty five. I, I, I don't know.
Sure, I think that's a great point. And I, um, advise here, but, um, I don't know how much of the concept of MFR forty five has been informed by the text of the future land use plans. Um, and that's one of those things to Chrissy's point with like, we do the land use code updates together after and, and while we, we do that, we're going back and referencing and cross referencing chapters of the future land use plan as we build out a holistic code update is, is the way that, um, do it. And so, so, um, it's, it's this theory, you know, that's just, um, community planning theory you want to learn. And so, uh, that's like really a strong point is like we, we should, um, what is in our favor is that we have had a public meeting already. There were the public meetings that informed the future land use plan. We've received the public comments already and we've taken all of those and made a composite of the sentiment of our community. What will Moab look like in the future? Is this an appropriate, that's like, that's called the future land use plan. And so, uh, yeah, you know.
Don't have, there's only land use codes to go hand in hand with that land use plan.
And this is one of the, this, this is one of the goods that we may look at, you know?
I think personally, Aaron asked the perfect question there. That is, what is the number? More density definitely brings costs down at least to some point, and for low income house, housing, low cost of, of building is important, right? That's how you drive the cost of the rent there. But what's the magic number? Is it forty five? Is it something else?
Or is it forty five? Is it one to forty five, but it has to be on a three acre parcel? So that you have parking and roads and open space. Do you, do you create it a little more thoughtfully? If we want to do forty five, that's fine, and we can do forty five on one acre, but we can't have forty five on only one acre.
And that's worth fifteen minutes.
But I mean, I think that that's a, I, I think that these neighbors are who were really sort of can you imagine if this got built next to your house and what that feels like?
I, I can't.
I mean, we've got a, like, these are yeah, I mean, it's a really big question that I just, um, I, I, if, if this is gonna go through and it seems like the commission is, members of the commission really want this to happen. I like the idea of like what everyone's saying, but we also have to potentially accept that this is getting passed in some form sooner than the land use code is going to be rewritten. So with that in mind, um,
Well, maybe looking at your blue letters, um, I, I really did like the, this more elaborate discussions of AMI, the development agreement. I would direct us to look at that, um, section C sub two. And, and, um, the, the standards in A, um, there are a lot of things, I think, um, here that, um, we have addressed what we can. You know?
Yeah, I mean, I kind of want you guys to, to look at what I wrote and let me know if there's something I missed. If there's something that you guys want to include, if there's.
I'm sorry, this is my first time reading it. It's, it just didn't wait for me. I mean, could we just be like, this is coming from the commission. Can we be like, we don't recommend you do anything unless you do that. I mean, that, that's kind of my consensus.
Absolutely, you guys.
So they, they can pass it on their own, but it will be with, I mean, I would still like to help them in, if they're dead set on this, but I'm kind of like.
Well, and I, I want to kind of call back to what happened with HDHO where, you know, there was a lot of people in this room who weren't for it. But were able to come to a form of an agreement to, and it didn't go through the way that it was originally presented, which I think is an improvement. So with, you know, if we're going to pass, if something is going to be passed, you guys can say, yes, we don't agree with this. We don't want it. But if it is going to be passed, at least do X, Y, and Z.
So if we were to come to something or even if we weren't, whatever the commission decides to go with, and then we start addressing the land use code down there. Do we have an opportunity to make changes at that point to it?
We're building replaced with the new land use code either way.
I'll tell you something that happened to me just recently. Um, Fran called and asked something, we needed something done. I got into the land use code and he was rebuilding something. And I called Chrissy, this doesn't, there's, doesn't end there. This doesn't even allow. It used to have this section in the land use code that said, okay, here's how it works. It's gone. That could, there will happen, all of this. We might be Texas, just go green lot, go green lot and do what you want. And that's scary to me. If we don't get something alternative in place that will help our whole entire community. I, I, I just think this would be crazy because who are we building for? Who's, who are we building for? See what I know. All I know is, if, if Velver did come, I'm just gonna be as, as honest, it came a couple of years ago.
It's for the church property, right?
Remember, and he's from the, the Flossett front and he was right, and it was for low income and, but it, I know that they would have to, you know, change a lot of standards to make it work. That's where I assume it, it came from.
That's where I assume it, it came from. His book is actually. I can hand to his book, I got it shoved in my face not very long ago, so. Um, and I'm not, it's just, I'm just giving you my, and then it hasn't died out, like, I do think.
But same questions, who are we building for?
Well, Erin, maybe you know that with the housing hats first, have you guys come to a consensus or are we still waiting for the survey result?
Come to our big, beautiful.
I, I appreciate that question. But I'm reminded of, of Chrissy's point. That this is something that we really. Um, at this point in the discussion. Are. We're going, we are being presented with parts. And it is. When you have the parts provided to you and the idea instructions there, you, you will find out whether or not you've got a bookshelf for a coffee table. And so. Um, at the very least, you can tell the quality of the thing you just unboxed by whether or not it's made out of particle border or. I just, I love a metaphor, I'm gonna keep going with this. There are some, there are some things in this that I particularly like, and I think a couple of things that I think, um. Given a little bit more time after we've seen it, after we discuss it. Um, we might be able to give Chrissy a little bit of help and say like. A few more bullets underneath this. For example, we're talking about a maximum height of forty-two feet and a minimum. Parking requirement of just over one. Parking space per unit. And, and my immediate question is what happens? Um, when, uh, the, the design of the development. Can't achieve both because of the size or shape of the lot. Um, and so what does that process look like? How like?
When they go to a smaller. That's the only choice. It becomes forty-three instead.
I don't wanna speak out of turn, but I live right next door to. I, I, I live between the university and where those. Apartments are currently being built right now, and what happened in that situation is they requested a rezone. And then they annexed into the city, and so instead of it being limited to thirty-five feet, it's now limited to forty-five feet, and I've got. These two giant buildings that are gonna be looming over my acre now, and I think that. Is an unintended consequence that needs to be considered with that kind of a density, cause it's not fun, so.
And I've been saying for a while, I think looming is gonna be the next noise issue with Grand County.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, and to me, if we gotta get organized on this, what, we need a map for appropriate places to put this, this is the first thing we need. And then we need to like have de- designs, do, do we just take Provo's thing and be like, here's a design standard example?
Before we spiral too far. You know, um. We need to get all of those questions answered. Um, it doesn't sound to me like we're going to be given the time to answer those questions.
That's, that was my question, what is our time frame on this? Well, do we have an opportunity to workshop? Cause I think that's a solid.
I think that's a good idea, and I actually was thinking after you said that, maybe um, the next meeting that we're going to reschedule. Would be on a different day, and it can be a workshop with the public to discuss this specifically.
I, I would. For. Oh, uh, you know, I love me a good public comment session. I really do, it's, I, I'm serious, it's the most important function we have. But I would like before this were presented to the public, I would like a workshop with. Books who are able. Like, um, I sit down with new, with Kate, the new emergency manager, and look at those lots. That are. We're gonna use like land use, like public land jargon here, but there's the difference between suitable and eligible. And so eligible lots are gonna be whatever those lots are already colored in on the future land use map. And then we're gonna have to determine if those are suitable lots, which means the emergency manager looks at it and says, I can evacuate. Four hundred people, or it would be four hundred, you know, but a hundred. Forty people from, uh, uh, on that road, and talk with the fire district and say, oh, we can't. You know, that bend in the road, our fire truck can't make that turn because there's a giant cop which are there. Um, and so we need to get what's suitable to what's eligible. And then we need to take those eligible and present it to the public and say. Who dissents? And, um, I, I. I think there's no better way. To understand. Whether or not what we're doing. If, if whether or not what we're doing is the right thing to do, then to be able to give the public a real accurate message and understanding of what it is we're trying to do. And so I, I want, I want their informed opinion with more details, and like you said, like map first. You know, I think. Graphical tools are so much better to communicate these ideas than even like highlight the lots. And say. The utility companies, public safety, transportation, and have agreed that these are suitable places from their perspective, that. This would work and not cause a problem for the practical functions of government. But. What about your public opinion? You know, and that's. Adored to NIMBY. It absolutely is, that's how that works. Um, everybody who was in favor of higher debt tier housing and is. When the future land use maps got fuzzy little crayon graphics and it's not actually up against their law. Changes things.
I, I don't, I don't see, I mean, I'm not against. Greater density of the, the, who is it for? I'm not gonna say developers, I'm gonna say it's for some low-income. Housing, my guess is. You get a developer interested who had, um, multifamily residential. Interested in it with MF twenty-five, I don't know why you have to go to forty-five. And. We need enough time to workshop this and get it to them, otherwise we don't get it to them.
My face with them.
I mean, we really do, because it's important, and that's not to drag feet at all, you know, we can try to accelerate it as fast as we can, but. I, I sure don't wanna just pass something up to them that's not well thought out, they might pass something that's not well thought out.
Aaron, Aaron might be able to better advise me on the technical aspects of this, but my. From what I understand. About land use theory and, and the trends that are happening, everybody wants developers, when I say everybody, all the developers wanna go up. Because it's substantially cheaper to run a pipe and a wire up the side of a wall than through a ditch underground. Bottom line, it's cheaper to go up these days. It makes the housing cheaper, it makes the construction go faster. There are, there are limits. At some point it does, but I mean, when we're talking about. We're talking about two stories or three stories, that's the essence of it, when you get down to the speed, we're talking about three-story apartment buildings. And three stories are cheaper.
Real quick to speak to time. Uh, state laws. Speaking of staff, state law, um, does say that the commission cannot act on a land and use code amendment. Um, unless there has been significant, unless there's been significant delay from the planning commission, planning commission has to act first. Before the county commission or the legislative body can, um. Rule. Uh. It doesn't give a timeline for what delay means, but the word is delay, if you're actively working on it, there's. You could said, you could make a really. Good argument that it's not being delayed, it's being worked on.
Run into that.
But just wanted to clarify that, cause it's either be quite a question or not that, so I just wanted to clarify that really quickly.
Yeah, um. That's, I, I think. I would not really be ready. For any form of. Public hearing or public workshop into go. And, and, and I don't know what like, uh, the, the county's policies or like state law says in this context. But when we would do something this large, I would want to identify and enroll what's called an IDT or an interdisciplinary team. Or a steering committee, um, which would really be, um, a best use of our. Um, colleagues and partners' time if we were doing one for the entire land use code update. Um, but, um, we would want to like. There's a, an, another thing, forgive me for being the one who's rambling right now, but. On, and I'm saying this loudly into the record to make my point. When we're assessing the knowledge, skills and abilities of hiring, uh, uh, new ranger or new technical boat operator or something like that. The common thing you say when assessing your. Capability. Is that if you're going to do a task, it doesn't matter whether or not you only need to do that task ten percent of the time or a hundred percent of the time. Your knowledge, skill and ability to complete that task doesn't change with how often you're obligated to do it, you need to do it right. Even if you're only doing it ten percent of the time, and I think that kind of translates well to this idea. Where. The amount of. Partner involvement, opinion gathering, consolidating of aspects and values and weighing public comments. Is going to be. The same amount of people involved, the same number of meetings, whether or not we're doing it for. One piece of code at a time, or whether or not we're doing it entirely at once, we're just going to need to do that. Ten times instead of one time. That being said, we're still obligated to perform the duty of. Re-editing this at that performance level, right? Even if we're only doing ten percent, still gotta do it right. Which means, um. I think first and foremost, we need to. Identify the parcels we're talking about and eliminate the ones that our subject matter experts say aren't gonna go. Because of public safety reasons, because of utility infrastructure reasons. You know, um. Rocky Mountain Power says, oh, we're not gonna build a hundred and thirty-eight kilovolt line out there until like twenty forty-two. Well, what are we doing? Yeah.
I guess. If we're gonna start from a simple standpoint, would we do, consider this anywhere other than highway commercial?
Gosh, I don't think, like, I don't think we could.
And then I think, and to your point, Tony, there are places even on highway commercial where this would.
That, that's what I'm saying, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying there.
So that kinda simplifies it a little bit.
Can I make a comment? I, I remember Elisa, we talked about this, and maybe you remember it too, Eric, briefly. And there was only a couple spots where she was like, oh, it makes really good sense when we're doing a future land use map, because I think. The bigger. At least for me is, we are this amenity-based community, obviously views are important, right? All of those things. I know, I know where you live and I know what you're gonna be looking at. Right, and so I think that. Also looking at similar communities, not just our surrounding communities, but what is Jackson doing, what is Aspen doing, what, you know what I mean? Similar communities that are surrounded by beauty, and that's why people live here, right? Um, and so, I don't know, I have a couple thoughts, but I remember when Elisa, it was just a couple sponsors, she was like, it makes sense here. It was.
Well, and the old one did have, it, it. It incorporated a, a bunch of zones, it said you could only do it in, you know, here, 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 here. But the way it was written didn't actually translate to what the intent was. So. I mean, we just have to be really. Thoughtful with wording, um, to make sure that we don't inadvertently leave something out that. Should be there or. In, you know, include something that absolutely shouldn't. Um, I. Tend to lean on. Road designations, whether they're arterial or collectors, because then you're always going to be in a place where it's appropriate. Because the road is already dictating that. Um, those roads don't exist until you get to a certain level of travel on the road. So, to me.
In the coal line for utilities and public safety and evacuation, that's kinda like the standard.
Yeah, so road, and then you're also always going to have access to wire on those roads, you're gonna have easements on those roads, like those things are just going to be there. Um, that's why that was kind of the first thing I, I thought about was the road.
Why, why wouldn't we just limit it to? Some, well, we already talked about highway commercial and then a subset of that, you know, when the future land use map, we've already identified the high-density nodes. Is there a reason we even consider this anywhere other than the high-density nodes identified in?
I wouldn't think so, but the way it was handed to me, it didn't say that, is that any?
But I mean, that's the reason they brought it here, because they want our feedback. So. I, I wouldn't think we'd consider it anywhere other than those places we've already determined are gonna be high-density.
Oh, well, yeah, I, I, I mean, I think at this point, in order to go back and consider it somewhere else, we would be. Um, subject to consistency review.
Yeah, exactly.
My great, um.
So we don't need to worry about arterials, it's on the main road.
Yeah, but I mean, you have to, you still have to spell it out in the code, so I understand that like. Ideally, yes, we all understand that, but if it's not written here, then it doesn't exist, if it's not in writing, then it's not included, so.
Is there a way you could write it up so that we could reference that future land use map?
I did say that.
And specifically those high-density nodes?
Yeah, within the future land use designation, which calls for multifamily residential such as H two B C units or A, the, or updated. Future land use plan of the twenty thirty general. So it did include that, because in that general plan, it doesn't include anything above eighteen units. The, the future land use plan does not include anything above eighteen units, if I think we should, I wanna say again.
And then even.
Future land use plan does not include anything.
Even a statement that says something like it cannot exist outside of the high-density nodes on the future land.
For sure.
Then we're limited to a couple spots, that's it.
Yeah.
Aaron, you were.
Oh, uh, I'm sorry, I was just reading on the district standards on that. Is there a reason why it has to be restricted to households with very low, low area median income?
Well, I think because. Putting forty-five units on an acre in order for, in order to get community buy-in, the reason that we would. People would be amenable to it, it's because it's for low income, otherwise.
I was assuming, Chrissy, that the reason was because the way you drive costs down and gets rents lower is by having higher density.
Um, I mean, I think this one, this specifically designed for a federal grant program.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, they, they have to be restricted with that. I mean, there are theories, like, when you have things like this, it traps people in poverty, and it also like. Concentrates poverty, that's kinda my concern with that language, on there, there's like ideas and housing that you should have, like. You know, these kind of, kind of things to be like. You know, uh, in Vienna, Vienna is an awesome example of, uh. Of, of housing, it doesn't matter what your income is, it's, i- i- it's all the. Like, kinda everybody lives in every, every spa, so anyway, I was just listening to that, so I, I kinda get concerned. With language like that, like, okay, let's think about that, not just be like, oh, okay, like, that's fine, like, you know. And, you know, I wanna go through this stuff with fine-toothed combs, and like, why is it like that? Why is it?
Yeah, I think that that language was pulled specifically to accommodate. The federal grant programs that help build these things.
Okay, yeah, that was, I don't know, standing, because it sounds a lot like. The other things that here that individually was shot and sold, and they will always be like, oh, at least, this is, this is a. Kind of written and designed around low-income rental apartments, so let's, let's describe what we're hearing in plain man language with. Three-story low-income rental apartments.
Yeah, there's, there's, these will never be sold, yeah.
So here, here's another dumb question. One of the nodes we identified is by the university. It seems to me that if we have high-density housing around the university, you would want that to be occupied by students. Not necessarily low income. So does that mean we cross that one off the list from a standpoint of note that? Wouldn't be acceptable for high-density, in other words, we would not want MFR forty-five there.
Well, I think most of that's been annexed in the city, any Aspen, so that wouldn't be an area. Well, I think most of that's been annexed in the city, anyway, I spend, so that wouldn't be an area that we would even be considering anyway, but.
Then, does that make us with just one identity node, which is Spanish Trail?
Well, no, we have a couple, so we have basically that that intersection sort of by. Murphy Lane and. Mill Creek, Mill Creek, and then over by Research Boulevard.
Oh, okay.
What would basically be the those two areas where this would be um.
And the one over by Resource Boulevard already has some H D H O layers on top of it.
Yeah, so on that part over there, I think, yeah, this one was a little bit further uh up on resource, you know.
More towards the highway, right, one ninety one. Going up of Mill Creek and Health Fields. I guess that was gonna be M F R forty five or something, high density, that'd be a candidate for city annexation.
Well, eventually, I don't think right at this moment, but um it sounds, it seems kind of like they're trying to scrape down. It's not Holyoke, but you know, that one over there.
I do like part of Aaron's point about um. Creating more than just a a toehold. For our residents to admit to a life of service industry labor, but rather like giving them an avenue. To generate real million wealth over time. I don't know how the commission feels about this specific statement, but I would be open to thinking about offering these. For rent to households of any resident, households of any income level but sale. For households of only maybe of median and lower income level, right? Um I don't like, I don't know if that compromise is even on the table, but that's something that I would.
Probably not good for the grant that they're trying to.
But we're also not supposed to tailor an ordinance to us. Like, we're really not supposed to acknowledge that.
Like, I believe in ownership and like the character of an idea of ownership is is important. And I, you know, I remember, I swear, either I talked to one of the developers for that Boulder Avenue property. And I think Marion Jacques, I, were you on this, Trish, that Marion Jacques had gone up to Salt Lake and looked at that?
Doc, I think, did for sure.
Okay, yeah, I thought they were not limited, I thought it was ownership was possible, I don't remember.
My understanding is that there was no ownership, that they would always only be rentals.
And then does that come from bill, does that come from the grant?
Here, we, they can't be sold individually.
Right, and I was, I just said we should change that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a real advocate of ownership, you know, and it's like, why restrict something when the restriction is the like. The limiting factor, I remember like Mike McCurdy was like, I lived above. The commercial spot on a highway, and that's what made the rent cheap, right, and it's like, that's what makes it cheap, is it's on on a density thing, so it's like, do we need to restrict? Uh because it's already gonna not be a billion dollars, because it's gonna be high density.
I don't know, it's um. Thirty thousand feet. We, I think, can all agree that there are at least a couple of lots where three-story low-income apartment rentals may be appropriate. Um, maybe even just one. But do we want them to be limited to only very low-income rentals in perpetuity? Or is there a way? I I I personally think that. We've heard enough developers come in here and say, well, I can't afford like with the H D H O thing, like I ought to be able to sell some of these. Or otherwise, I'm not gonna be able to make this pencil out, what if we flip that on instead? It's like run them to the rich kids, sell them to the people who work here, right? What if we just take that logic and just turn it the other side of the coin?
You know, one of the interesting things, Tony, that you that thought brought up with me is. When we were talking about the H D H O bill notes, one of the people that came online, who actually at the. It might have been in the closing, the closing comments. She said the problem they had was not finding people that were interested in buying qualified people, the problem was getting them, getting them. And so to that point, higher density, lower cost, kind of fits with easier finances. That's so maybe they're in some, maybe they're in something like this.
We're talking, I mean, like, we get caught up in the ordinance, but it's important, I think, to remember, like. Keep hitting the real world, like, what is this ordinance specifically talking about? It sounds like one specific type of building on one lot. And we're like, okay, so like, let's, or maybe two lots. So what kind of, we have a little bit of opportunity here to guide. What that, how that plays out, what that. So I just, that was a suggestion, um for the record, people can forgot that I said it. Or or not choose to listen to the recording of this after the fact, but um.
Tony, the way this discussion is kind of going is we've all got a whole bunch of questions about where to go, where to head with this thing. And I wonder if it wouldn't make more sense if, as a commission, we took some time to get our list of questions or issues put together and then had. A workshop with the county commissioners. And have them give us some direction as far as on that long list of things that. We're somewhat troubled with.
I would like that, I just, I mean, like, I really.
It needs direction. And then the other part of the puzzle that bothers me is, how does this fit with land use code updates and? You know, I was gonna bring this up in future considerations, but it'll kind of fit here, and that is. I got the landscaping. Uh or, you know, amendments that are a rush emergency, okay, we got this, that seems like it's kind of the same path. Give us the list of the other Russian emergency stuff so we can be prepared to not have, not get smacked down by the brain every week.
Man, Jerry, I would like that, too.
Then at some point, is that long list better consolidated and then use code updates, which we know we need to do anyway. And maybe that would be a good general discussion to have with the commission in a joint meeting, too.
Yeah, I think you're right. I would like that.
Too, like, we just went through this with that landscaping ordinance, now we have this. What is gonna show up at the next one, but when, when are we actually gonna get the opportunity to focus on this land use code? Because we keep getting these small pieces of the land use code thrown at us. So why don't we figure out where the actual priority is, is it these small? Ordinances that need immediate attention, or is it we start focusing on land use code and workshop these first and get those? Going at the same time, rather than making double the work for ourselves later when we're doing the land use code and still have to come back and review these. Because this, every time we get something like this. I feel that we're having to make a decision on a whim that opens the county up for a lot of vulnerability. And if it's not going through legal the first time I go around, then I have concerns that. If we say, okay, well, if this is what you want. I just don't, I don't like doing this without talking about land use code.
It's just gonna work better if we can roll it in a line, it's gonna work better.
Because we have to review it anyway. I love this conversation.
Trish, does the commission kind of get that, so I I know we have some things going out, like we got the. Andrew, I I I met with Andrew and. Like, where is like the money for that thing, is the bits, the R F P been?
If that has been, if the R F P has been written, I don't know where this sits, we have the money in the budget, I mean, like, yeah, maybe we've used a little bit.
Yeah, I have some of the money in the budget. I have begun an R F P, but I have not had.
We may, like, this is like, two and a half months ago, we just kind of like we circled around back to that question. And that the uh, there is forty hours of work a week to do as a planning and zoning administrator. And until we have a planning and zoning director and an associate planner. Um that one person is, her time is fully satisfied with the obligations. Of the administration of the existing land use code now um. Contract review, financial agreements, running those financial agreements through legal, handling invoicing and procurement. Dealing with the consultant, putting together a board, all of that is not legally mandated. Whereas the duties of the planning and zoning administrator must be completed, and so. The planning and zoning department as a whole right now is just chipping away if they have three hours. At the end of the week here or there, to just like edit a paragraph, send up one thing, and so that's um. That's the practicality of it, like, we really need. A fully staffed, internal, not outsourced, planning and zoning team. Probably larger than the one that we had the last three years. To effectively fulfill our current responsibilities that are must be done, the county shall. And on top of starting them. Maybe the biggest planning type effort that I've ever been involved with.
Can I, I think you're right, this idea about maybe we start there, I'm just throwing this out. A basic joint workshop with the commission, just to answer some of these basic questions you guys are bringing up. And 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 the concern, I think the fact that you brought up inputs at us at risk, I think you're absolutely right. I think the sloppier, and I I'm not saying you're right, sloppy. Or that we're rushing through these processes, I think it puts the county at great risk, so thank you for bringing that up. Um so I think maybe just to kind of. Just open conversation between the two commissions about. What do you guys want out of us, right, asking the county commissioner, what? You know, this, what we think is best to reform with the land use code, you know, and like you said, maybe we can do a couple edits. Coinciding with that process.
Like, I think the commission's top five. You know, and then at least it gives us a chance where you're not having to do something last minute, which you're already having to go through these things on top of. Planning and zoning department as a whole. I just think we're making a lot of extra work for everyone, including commissions, too, because we have to go back and forth on these conversations. With minimal information, we don't have all the information to make decisions at the start.
Chrissy, would um, would you be able to work with Mark and find a time? Where the majority of the. Planning and zoning interested county commissioners might be able to have, I don't know about you guys. But after, like weekdays after five P M, I'm usually pretty open, I don't have a family or anything like that. Um but like. Yeah, can we find a time between like now and, I don't know, August twentieth, is that too far out, is that not far out enough?
Could that just be our next one?
Well, uh, one thing I'd ask is that we as a group have a chance to consolidate our thoughts before we talk to them.
Yeah, not like next week, like in a couple of weeks.
And we should, we need to have at least one meeting that we can sit down and take all our notes and go through.
As as the one meeting with us. I like that, Jerry, yes. One, one preliminary, get our heads together. We put bullets, you you did bullets outlines.
Well, okay, just to to clarify, I leave on the eighth and I come back the eighteenth. So, you guys can have that meeting, but I wouldn't be involved in it.
Well, we would need you for that one. But we could have that meeting early.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if we, if, Mark won't be back until. I think Mark can expect all this for. So. I could see if we could schedule it that week, the fourth through the eighth, and I could talk to Quinn, I think that's.
Yeah, I I would, I would say on the, on the subject of scheduling, especially internal workshops. Um at least for us, for working moms, stuff like that. Um I don't just pick a date, like, I've got to go back and compare the, not only. My work schedule, but my personal life schedule and the schedules of my employees. You know, we have to worry about things like who's the manager on duty, things like that, and so if we pick a dates, let's, let's pick dates on a keyboard so that it's easy to figure out. Um the, like, I only have my personal phone on me right now, I can't see who is answering the phone.
Just in, just in general, Chris, you're saying that the week of the fourth might work, okay?
Yeah, I'll have to talk to Quinn tomorrow and see if we could work out something the week of the fourth. Alternatively, we could do the day after the commission meeting on the twentieth. So the commission meets on the nineteenth, we could try and schedule something on the twentieth.
I mean, I don't think about meetings in terms of days, I think about meetings in terms of the forty-five minute time slot, so that's why we should do this on the keyboard. Can't wait until I'm retired, guys.
And then sometime following that meeting, we could have a workshop with the county commissioners. Yeah, I think that would work fine, and then so we're thinking we would cancel the. Meeting on the eleventh that you're not gonna make anyway, and we replace it with a workshop to go over. This information and maybe we could add the landscaping, get our thoughts together on landscaping at the same time, do a workshop.
I like that, and and then focus on like. These ten or twelve things, these core concepts. As our two bodies relate, are going to only improve the effectiveness of the ordinance that we are able to create.
I guess, the third, third item we could have with the commissioners is, you need to tell us what else is on your mind before we do the land use code updates, because we can't keep.
Every time one of these comes up, it's like, well, we haven't done the I D P, we haven't done the I D P, we haven't. Uh steering committee, yeah.
And I would just, you know, Stephen, even I've been on this commission or your liaison for a while, and it's, it's complex, and I would say. I I don't mean to offend anybody, but probably the bulk of the county commission doesn't understand. The land use code and how important it is, and how complex it is and how. Complex the update would be and how important, you know, so I I I think just kind of reiterating that information to them. How important it is that it be done holistically, I keep saying it, I don't think I'm getting my point across. And so I think the, the, you know, having, you know, institutional knowledge conveyed to them, I think it's really important.
Well, they actually should realize that we have a whole department, right, planning.
And then we, we have two gracious folks who are helping us out on top of other responsible pieces. An engineer who is like getting settled in, but that's just like, yeah, an engineer does my organs. Sorry, Jerry, I'm trying to defend myself, I love you, man, really excited you're here on the team. But, but it's not like, saying that we've had it. We've added a very, my point is we've added a very specific kind of capacity to the planning and zoning department, but we, we are not close. To, yeah, the labor force needed to.
Well, I think handling those two and meeting with them, along with a third topic of. What are the other priorities before land use code updates would be really, it'd be a very productive way for these two teams to. Figure out how to work more efficiently.
So just to make sure that I understand exactly what, because I think that I I've, after this conversation, I'm kind of thinking that I misunderstood you. So my thought was we have a meeting with just our body first, and then. We schedule a meeting joint with the commission, okay, so we are going to meet and I will send up a board for that.
Trish, you know, the, the county, we kind of had that housing subcommittee thing, and and that should really be the. The commission sub or commission or subcommittee is kind of like. If I was to draw a great process, it's like, hey, that's what the commission wants, and then this is what we can do. It's kind of like, we haven't met since that, is, have we kind of abandoned that?
No, um I am actually meeting just um with with Caitlin and Ben on um Thursday. No, um, I am actually meeting just um with, with Caitlin and Ben on um Thursday. I believe, yeah, we're meeting just with a couple, just to really kind of talk about the, the money, the hundred grand. And and then I can get back to you on that where that anyways, they were, because Caitlin had talked about putting together a proposal.
Yeah.
So really just to kind of go over with a very small group.
Well, I was talking about more like the subcommittee.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, because it's kind of like what Jerry's saying, you're like, they're spitballing things and it's. You know, it's like, hey, if it was more organized from the commission, like here's our. I mean, we can call a subcommittee meeting for on the commission side.
We don't know their priorities, right?
I just have the entire commission, both commissions. I like it.
Pretty well, I like the path forward, um. We're pretty well in agreement on what we, on what we need to get done. And I would say. Let's, in the meantime, in how much time that is, twelve to eighteen days between now and when we were able to meet as a group. Um. Let's have our thoughts organized well enough. So that they can be presented as a like product, you know, a series of bullets or a workflow. And says like, these are the questions that we need to answer, and we, and we can workshop those and kind of do our own little. Internal public comment period, figure out how to express our consensus view.
That'll be our next meeting.
Yeah.
Maybe um before, between now and then, if you guys could all send me five. Questions, concerns, things for the commission, I can compile them and then I'll send them back out and then we can, um, you know.
Once more into the fray, yes.
Just, just so that we're, you know, so I can create something that we work through, um.
In a logic.
Yeah, systematically instead of just like a discussion that could go off the rails.
To do there, whatever you like.
Yeah, so just send me something.
Are we gonna be able to tackle those two items then, this and the landscape?
I would say tackle that on your own. Synthesize, synthesize.
At the Chrissy, my concerns and there it's.
Is it synthesized?
Simple enough. I still think there's some good discussion that we need to have an organization and I highlighted like three or four things. For Chrissy, I think it'd be well worth ten or fifteen minutes.
I I agree with you, Jerry, but let's give a, I'm gonna try and do some work. On my end internally to make sure that those ideas have been synthesized before I give them to Chrissy. Because like we got pops with this thing, we got pops with the landscape ordinance. Rather than complaining about this thing and the landscape ordinance, like I'm gonna figure out what my complaint is. And I'm gonna tell her that.
That's what.
Not about the land. Not about the landscape.
I agree. That's the only way to do it. And it's the same with this, right?
No, I mean, it's, yes, yes, it's, it's the universal.
Basically the same. What is it that concerns us about this? Where do we have flexibility? Where do we need, do not, where do we not? That's the kind of things we need to understand.
Yeah, right. And then I think, but I think most people are kind of on the same page there, but I think if anything is missing, then I could just put them in a list. I'm assuming that there's gonna be three that are the same from every commissioner. So I can put those in and then the things that, you know, also need to be addressed and discussed with the commission I can add, and then it'll just be a more. Um, streamlined conversation that can be.
Presented. I would like. Um. When we talk to the county permission, I would like to present coherent request. You know, not, not a list of grievances.
Well, if we have that preparation meeting with this team, I think we'll have that.
Yeah, the.
I don't think we'll leave without it. Honestly, we worked pretty well with it.
The, no, I think we really did. The drafters said we in Congress assembled. First, they didn't, they didn't just start sending nasty grants to George. Uh. So, yeah, I would, I look forward to that. I think, um. I don't know if we need to do anything other than I'll give Chrissy the nod that she can proceed with those scheduling. Considerations and we'll be ready for her the next time, you know, this year.
Okay.
Cool, um, future considerations, somehow that was not future consideration.
The other thing, I had one future consideration, which was land use code, and I think we've handled that.
Right.
There is, but there is a reminder I'd like to give to one of the members here for a future consideration. It, this is, Aaron, this is your chance for the selfish prug about the. Um, the big meeting you got later on in the week.
Yeah.
The date and the time and the title?
Yeah, it's six thirty at the mark.
Oh, is this the, um, I saw about the survey?
Yeah.
Did you saw your survey yet? General public? I'm looking at you.
Is that Wednesday?
Yeah, the thirtieth is a Wednesday. Yeah.
Uh, Starwell?
At the mark. And so we have, uh, panelists, um, you know, we've heard. Uh, you know, some people weren't happy with, um, some of our, our choosings of. Of everything on there, but uh, I think if you're not happy with it, you should go in and ask hard questions of our panelists. Uh, the, um. Oh, no, not about you.
Maybe it's bad.
I think, I think that, that, you know, sharing information about, um. How the city sees things, how the county sees things, um, what are numbers? And then we can kind of like be like, okay, we can address policy from these raw numbers, right? Like that we're gathering. Um, so that's, that's it with that.
Thanks, Dan. Um, other future consideration, not gonna be here for the August twenty-fifth meeting, Idaho. Um. Just to note there, we've done that entire week and teach him. But he got to be fine. Um. Anything else?
I'll also be gone from the twelfth to later that month, probably like the twenty-eighth. Yeah.
Um, all right, guys.
I just have this clarification. I don't know if it's good to ask it here or what, but with Andrew, the guy that we're hiring.
The horror sky.
Yes. Is he contracted to be the planning director? Okay. But then he is planning, he's been hired to do the, uh, the water stuff.
So he is a contract planner hired by the county. Who does work as dictated, like that I hand him. And that's, that's it. So.
He's like staff?
Yeah, he's essentially like. Associate planner.
Contracted to support us.
Yes, so, yeah, so, um, similar to like how we sometimes have a contract engineer who handles certain. Um, projects as directed by the staff. So he's not someone that I would, I would hope that no one in this group is reaching out to him to do anything. Um, that should all be done through, through me and through, um, comm admin, if anybody.
Okay.
Um, he is. He's very capable. I really like him, um, but all, everything, all work products should come through. Me and then to him, because there's a lot of things that I'm already working on. If he's being directed to do something by someone else, then. Basically just wasting my time.
And also, um, as a contract associate planner. Understand he will probably be dealing with a lot of those things that we don't see that are like the county shall. And we don't want him to get confused about what. Um, we need him to do to fulfill the planning and zoning department's legal obligations as far as meeting permit, application deadlines, et cetera. Versus like, this is purely an extracurricular exercise in light of the mandatory things we must fulfill for applicants. Other things and, and that's a. Remember, we are advisory, um, in a legislative capacity. And what happens here in the county building Monday through Friday, nine to five. Is very much the executive from Mark Tyner down, so that's how that works.
Yeah, but to just to, to be really clear, he's helping me on a couple C U Ps, um, he did the O A O rezone, um. And then some, some subdivisions that are just a little more complex that, uh, Dan had previously started. He works with Dan. Um, Dan Stenta, so because of that, I, it made sense for that to stay with Dan. Cause it had already started there. So there's just a few projects and as he finishes them, I send him more, um, but for the most part. The day-to-day is just I'm taking care of it, like subdivisions and.
Okay.
Those kinds of site plan approvals and all those things.
I get you.
The waters, because he, um, has drafted it before, so that was just one that I handed to him.
Okay. If we had a planning and zoning director and two associate planners. Maybe one of those associate planners would be handling special projects like what. He's doing, and then the other one would be handling the more of a thing, right? But we only have. So. Shuffling it around. Cool.
Just one more question, Chrissy, with, when you set up that, when you start working with the commission on. The joint meeting, could you be sure to include the request for what else is on your priority list? Cause I need to understand. There's some level of frustration, maybe.
Yeah.
All right. Um. It's five fifty. Um, would I consider, I would consider a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move that we adjourn.
Um, all in favor? I'm none opposed, so three. Guys, thank you very much for addressing the actual bulk. Business that we need to tackle today and the, uh, special.